Noblesville Common Council to order at 7:00 PM. If you could all rise as Mr. Nelliot leaves us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Lee, will you call the roll?
Mr. Boyce.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Elliott.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Mr. Thurston.
Present.
Ms. Wilds.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a forum.
Thank you. Can I have approval of our minutes from our August 13th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
The motion and a second to approve our minutes of our August 13th meeting. All those in favor, a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Nine oh. Approval of our minutes from our...
Budget meeting.
Budget meeting, August 13th budget meeting.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes of our budget meeting from August 13th. There's a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh. Approval of our minutes from our August 20th budget meeting.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes from our August 20th budget meeting. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Nine oh. Petitions by comments, petitions or comments, petitions or comments by citizens who are present.
Please.
Okay, I skipped the agenda.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
It's a motion to approve the agenda and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Nine oh. All right, we're back on track. Petitions by comments by citizens who are present. If anybody would like to fill out a white card, has anything to say, please fill it out and hand it to the clerk. Will be no mayor's comments tonight. Council committee reports. Public Safety Committee met August 14th. Mike Davis, Evan Elliott, and myself were present from the council. Aaron Smith was conspicuously absent. The former mayor, we had to guess, former mayor Mary Sue Roland was in attendance at the meeting. It's worth noting. We saw, we met at the Fire Administration Building to see several pieces of equipment that we're discussing in our budget this year. Upgrading from the Life Pac 15 to the Life Pac 35 and how those leases work and how the maintenance agreements work and how that all gets aligned to make all of Noblesville safe. We saw the Lucas compression devices. We went out into the bays and saw the stretchers in action and the lifting, I can't remember what it's called, but the device that lifts them into the ambulance. We discussed money. We discussed the budgets. We discussed the new police station and that was voted by 80% of the membership of FOP and voted in favor of that. So that project's going to move forward and we had a brief discussion about the new fire station and that really didn't go anywhere, but we had, we talked about it. And that was it for the meeting. Any questions? None? Okay, we'll move on to utilities. Mr. Schwartz.
Yes, Mr. President. Utilities Committee met August 14th. Mark Boyce, Mike Davis, Evan Elliott, and myself were present. It was discussed, Mr. Magow had stated the goal to institute stormwater-only fees by the end of 2024 for residents who are not on Noblesville sanitary sewer. He stated Fishers asked the utilities to build these customers separately. He stated the agreement with Fishers allows both types of sewers to be built together, but Fishers has not yet done so. Mr. Magow also stated, or talked about the city's Barrett Law ordinance. It has not been updated in several years and he hopes to produce an update in 2025. The Barrett Law allows a neighborhood to connect to the master plan with sanitary sewer and pay the cost over a period of years. He stated the city's last sanitary master plan was approved in 2000 or 2002. He stated the engineering department has requested evaluation of the Green Valley neighborhood to see if sanitary sewer is needed. He stated he will provide updates to the committee as they are available. Mr. Magow presented a quarterly financial report on revenues and expenditures for the second quarter. He stated the report will help forecast for more revenue sources for the utilities and help show a more complete picture of its finances. He stated if unforeseen revenues are discovered, they will be included in future reports. Mr. Magow also stated that there will be murals added to the southern portion of the facility beginning September 14th and on the 21st. He is hoping for around 60 to 75 volunteers. That's it.
Any questions for Mr. Schwartz? That's a painting of the public safety or the utility, you know what date that is? It keeps Noblesville a beautiful project.
September 14th and 21st.
And we need volunteers, so anybody who'd like to sign up for that, we'd appreciate it. Any questions for Mr. Schwartz? Finance Committee, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met August 22nd. Dave Johnson, Aaron Smith, Megan Wilds, and myself. Several mid-year budget adjustments were discussed and fiscal debt actions on this meeting tonight were also discussed in that meeting. That and the claims docket comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Any questions for Mr. Davis?
No questions, just a comment. That might have been the shortest finance committee meeting I've ever been in the department.
Thank you.
It was pretty short.
It was great.
Yeah.
So, Mr. President, I would move that we approve the claims as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve the claims and a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Claims are approved. Miss Lane is number one. Counsel to consider resolution RC 3224, a resolution regarding the demolition of a building at 694 Logan Street within the downtown protection boundary and the issuance of a certificate of authorization. Denise Ashelman.
Good evening. The city received a demolition application for the property at 694 Logan Street on June 4th, 2024. After reviewing that application, we found that it was within the downtown protection boundary, which I think most of you will recall, in 2022, we revised the demolition boundary that required approval beyond just approval of a demolition permit. And we define an area that encompassed a lot of our historic National Register of Historic Places districts, which includes the square, Clinton and, not Clinton, Logan, Logan and Connor Streets, and also some areas on the north and south end of Knight Street on either side of the square. Those particular demolition requests must go to the Plan Commission for approval of what's called a certificate of authorization. And that certificate of authorization, if granted, is then forwarded to the council for affirmation of the request. We have only had one request that has come in since the revision. It was not granted the certificate of authorization, so this is the first time the council has seen an application of this type. The applicant made a presentation at Plan Commission. The Plan Commission voted to issue the certificate of authorization nine to zero. Just a reminder, actually, you don't know this, staff reviews and puts together a staff report. It is one of the instances where we do not actually make a staff recommendation. The applicant provides all the evidence that they believe supports their request and it's up to them to convince one way or the other whether to grant the certificate. I'm here for any questions and the applicant's going to go more into the specifics on their request.
Any questions for Denise Ashelman? Mr. Sullivan, you came a long way.
I have just either two blocks that way or two blocks that way. So yes, it is a long trek here. Good evening, council members. My name is Connor Sullivan. I'm the Hamilton County Attorney. And with me tonight, we have Steve Wood, who's the Hamilton County Director of Buildings and Grounds, and Brian Simmons from Skinder Construction. They will answer any technical construction questions that you may have that I cannot answer. As Denise said, we are here tonight for the affirmation of the Plan Commission's certificate of authorization. Again, as Denise said, it was approved nine zero. I understand that my colleagues here last week provided the presentation, so I'll try to keep it high level and save more time for question and answers. I know that there's probably a few that you guys would have to, would like to ask us. A little bit of background about the property. The county acquired the property in January 2024 for just under $1 million. The intended use for it was to be used as a staging area for the eventual judicial center expansion that is going towards the west, towards the White River. It is not going to the north as an annex property. I know there's some confusion recently, but that is not the county's intent. It is to go west for an expansion. The county did hire two commercial construction managers to look at this, the building, and to inform us whether it made sense to either rehab the building and bring it up to code or to tear it down and build it anew with its same aesthetics and what that value would be. Those, the two contractors were Skinder Construction and Garmong. I believe the cities worked with both construction managers, both qualified and well-experienced firms. They looked at the cost to demolish the building, backfill the basement and cede the lot. Then they've also looked at the cost to make, the cost to, for the corrections of the buildings, upgrade the MEP systems, renovate the interior spaces, and so that it can be marketed for commercial space. The county last week addressed two factors. It is, poor the ordinance, that it is not, there's no economically viable option for the property. The estimates from our construction team said that it would cost about 2.1 to 2.2 million dollars to bring it up to code. That is not ADA, that does not include ADA requirements as well, bringing the county's total investment at that point in time to north of $3 million. The fair market value of that, again, I know that was discussed last week. I know only Councilman Davis was here for that, but the county did receive appraisals for the property and it was, that was early 2000, I think 2022 or late 2023, and they came in just south of $600,000. So the county did pay a hefty price for it, more than, which I think will distinguish between the previous matter that was brought before the Plan Commission where the value might have been lower than what they, they were paying for, or something along those lines. But, so as, like I said, so it's the total investment for the county would be three to just over $3 million. Some of the concerns that were not addressed last week that I've since talked to a few of you or people have brought to our attention, I want to go over those real quick. As we said at the very beginning, the Plan Commission did unanimously approve this. There were no remonstrators present and no remonstration comments made at the Plan Commission. I understand that this being the second time before you guys, this, your concern about the precedent that would be set for future developers trying to tear down buildings in the historic area. I think there's a few factors that distinguish this situation from any future ones and previous one, too. One, the county's not a developer. We are a government entity just like the city. We are not doing this to make a return on investments. We are doing this to expand our courthouse. The state has mandated that the county add several courtrooms to our courthouse. That is required by law. We have to do something. So it's not some developer that's going to tear it down and hold it until some viable option happens. The county has to take action immediately to start the construction of those, the courthouses, sorry, the courtrooms in order to be in compliance with Indiana Code. To that point, too, it's any extra requirements or hurdles or burdens that are placed upon the county initially. Again, this is not a private developer where we can call upon an investor to add more money to the project. Those are covered by taxpayers. And that's not an excuse to have the county have right of way or free, you know, more discretion than a private developer, but it is something to keep in mind. I'm sure you guys are all, are all aware of that. The county and the city currently have an interlocal in place for the parking lot just west of Erica's. The county acquired that through a land swap deal with the city and a developer for the project just south of the courthouse. I think it's a J.C. Hart development. And that interlocal states that if the county were to ever use that for anything other than government use, the city would have the first right of refusal to purchase that property back and then the city would do, would be able to use it for any, any manner that's fit. So it's not something where the county, by demolishing the property at 694 Logan Street, ultimately trying to pull a quick one on the county or the city. There are things in place that will prohibit the county from doing that and will further enhance the partnership between the city and the county. The staging area will be there for about, hopefully, no longer than three years. Once it is done, it will be, we will turn it into a pocket park. That will include seating, concrete pad, benches, place for peonies, for flowers, a light post, and we will all work with the city to help make sure the sidewalk is widened right there. I'm sure you've all been aware, have been notified that there have been a few county employees that have unfortunately been struck by cars crossing over Logan Street on their way to work. And this will help promote public safety with the light there at night and then with the sidewalks being widened so that there's more room for pedestrians. That pocket park will stay there for the foreseeable future, and I know that's a concern, but it'll stay there until the partnership between the city and county is ready to develop that, whether that's through some kind of government mixed-use P3 project or with a private developer through some kind of redevelopment mechanism. But it will be a partnership between the city and the county. The county fully intends that the first floor of that, if they're ever to do an annex building, would be commercial, retail, restaurants, things of that nature to make sure that there is not a gap in the future development downtown Noblesville for things that, for people to either, like I said, go out to eat, go to the store or whatnot. The second floor could possibly use as private office space for other, either private attorneys, accountants, or other professional services. The third floor will be used for the county's prosecutor's office when the time comes. The county is working through a master plan right now to see what the county's land needs are for the next 50 to 60 years. We hired Ratio Architects to perform that. They are currently working through that right now. I believe at a recent event, was it sometime last week? I think Fisher Harebrandt was speaking about the project. I think he misstated, again, the county's not going to the north, we're going west. They talked about possibly, I think his exact words were gerbil tubes. The idea was that we are looking at all options to make sure that the county employees from the parking lot to our eventual courthouse, courthouse expansion or annex, have a safe way to get to work. And if gerbil tubes are part of that, that plan, then, then so be it. But again, anything like that would have to come before your planning commission for approval for our permits and engineering design and things like that. So again, that, that's not something the county can do, you know, latterly without the city's input and partnership. And speaking to the partnership, the county just, I think it was just on Monday, it was yesterday, Sarah Reed and her team came and talked about the West Gate expansion. County looks forward to partnering with the city for that. We're, play an intricate role with the judicial center right across the river, and so we look forward to working with the city and partnering, make sure that we take care of the downtown spaces so it's viable and, and more people would like to move here and live here and visit here. And finally, before I get on, have any questions or entertain any questions? When it comes to historic preservation, the county owns two of the most iconic historic buildings in downtown Noblesville, with the old courthouse and the historic jail. Just this year alone, we put $3 million into the courthouse, or the historic courthouse with the window renovations. Next year, we're going to put $2 million into the historic courthouse's ceilings and the jail's windows and ceilings there. I don't know of another entity that has put $5 million into preserving historic buildings downtown, in downtown Noblesville. It is imperative for the county to support the historic preservation of these buildings, and we have been, we've done so this year and have done so for the last several years and will continue to do so. That's a high priority for us. So at this point, any questions, comments, or concerns?
Yeah, real quick question. Later on tonight, we're going to address our ARPA funds and discuss the train and investment in getting the rail bikes downtown. The exhibit that you had did show it crossing into the Port Authority right of way. Can you address, will that train track stay open? Yeah, Mr. Wood?
Talking about the Hoosier.
Yeah, the Port Authority. It was on the exhibit, it showed it being part of this project, which I, I don't think that's the intention.
I'm Steve Wood. I'm superintendent for Hamilton County New Construction, Construction. It shows that on there. We're not touching the railroad. There's not a need to for us at this time.
Okay.
The whole purpose of it is that railroad stays there, it gives a place for them to stop, unload. And with us, what we're going to do is a curved piece of concrete out there with benches and light and flowers around it, right, which give them a place to unload as well.
Perfect.
So it should be a good place for it. You have any other questions for me? I'll get out of here.
Oh yeah, a lot of questions, Mr. Wood.
That's what scares me. Since I know a majority of you, that kind of scares me.
What it have to do with this project?
Any questions for the dream team while they're still?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Schwartz.
I do have one small comment combined with a question, just for people that hear that this building is going to be demolished. Never a great thing to hear, but, you know, I think that it was part of, you know, I'm sure the county has done everything they can, you know, to make, make this expansion of the courthouse feasible. Just coupled with that, I mean, I'm sure you guys have, but just so people know that every effort has been exhausted, have we looked into moving the building? Is the building up to being moved to another location?
I, so I, I know Steve will address that, too, but the building right now, if you've been in front of it, it has several bolts on the outside. It was bolted together several years ago, struck by lightning, the front actually detached from the rest of the building. Those bolts are the only thing that's really holding it together. I don't think, and Steve correct me wrong, it's financially feasible for the county to transport it and move it somewhere else. However, though, again, in spirit partnership, the city would like to do that. We are more than willing to partner with you, so you guys can pay for that and do that. But at this point, I, we don't believe it's financially feasible to do that. Okay.
Any other questions for?
Mr. President?
Yeah.
So earlier, when I was looking at this, I reached out to a couple folks up here and some other folks within the city, you know, at first I was... and some other folks within the city, you know, at, at first I was totally against it. I, I've got to the point where I'm okay with the demolition of the building, based on the cost and everything I've heard about the building, the, what it would take to get it up. I don't believe throwing good money at bad money. So my concern is just from the time it's demolished to the plan there. Did you consider, and, and again, I have not been in this building. Can that building be used as, as the, like a job site trailer, as opposed to putting one there?
So as per the city's, and we've had a discussion with the city, to file for permit, I have to disconnect all utilities before I even file for permit. So I've had no utilities in that building for four months. That building is not ADA sustainable, with a lot of trailers on it. It does not have the electrical needs to do that operation. You have to realize that building, 30 years, last 30 years, anybody's done any work inside this building. They're shoving snow off the, into adding space. Electrical's not up, and so it wasn't cost efficient. It's cheaper for us to tear it down and put a trailer there, right? So that's three years, right? Once the city redoes the sidewalk, which we have had discussions, they came to us about that, we'll put, put that concrete there and put that soup there. We will do everything we can to make sure the trailer looks as good as possible for three years of project. Once that project's done, we're, the plan is at this time, go in, grass seed it, and there'll be even a bigger, smaller parking site in Noblesville.
And so partnership with the city for possible redevelopment?
That's, that's you guys, I'm not that, I'm what's going to happen right now.
And the project will be roughly three years, is that what you're saying?
That's anticipation. By the time we get to it, it'll probably be about three years long.
Okay. And then when that project's going on, that's going to be where they're dropping materials?
So here's, here's how it's going to work. We, we lease a parking lot behind SIDS to you. If you remember correctly, we used that when we built the parking garage, okay? We have the lot next to SIDS as well. So we're going to have two staging locations.
Okay.
Equipment and parks in one location, staffing, equip, other equipment at the other locations. So those two parking lots will be full of equipment. So we will run equipment from one side to the other side to diminish the amount of traffic during certain times.
And that's where I was going with that, I'm, I'm trying to think of traffic.
So we could, if you would like, I'm going to throw this out there, Megan's aware of this, I've had that discussion. We could do everything from the hospital lot on the other side of the road, on the other side of Conner Street. That means we have to come across Conner, down 19th, down Logan Street. So as we've looked at this, this is the most feasible way, the most, the less.
It bothers, it's, it's at least bothering to the residents and visitors of downtown Noblesville and permits the open space for, you know.
It's two state highways, didn't it?
Yeah, and what we require at certain times of day, when the kids are getting out of school, we're not going to be moving that equipment. We'll do the same thing in the mornings, right? We're looking at all the traffic studies, we're looking at everything about that. The nice thing for us is when we did the parking garage, we did the same thing. And I think everybody up here is aware of that parking garage project went well. It's the same company building it, that built the parking garage, just because of that knowledge.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
A few quick questions and a comment. First, I just want to thank you guys for coming. I know that there's a lot of work that went into this on your guys' end and Skender and all the folks that you have doing it. But the, the way that we wrote this ordinance was exactly to have this type of conversation, right? I think this, and downtown Noblesville and Noblesville residents love downtown, and that's what makes us unique. And so for us to have this conversation in public is so useful to this process. So I know that there was a lot of work that went into it on your end, on our, our staff's end.
Thank you for your team, too. Sarah Joyce and Denise, we could have done without us, thank you.
So I really appreciate that, you know, and for being here for this. I just had a few questions, and just to reiterate, you spoke a little bit about that, that intent for first floor retail. I know that there's other property owners involved right now, which I, I understand, which limits you, you know, what it could be. But the intent of the county with what you're saying is that there would be retail or commercial from 8th Street to the river, as were?
From, from where the building stands now, yes, to the, to the river, yes.
Okay.
As much as feasibly possible with that new transmission line or power pipe behind it. Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I say, we don't know the timeline.
Correct, yeah. No, I, I understand that. And that brings me to the, the other point I had. I know that, you know, for the last many years, this property's been paying property taxes, which goes, you know, eventually into our, our downtown TIF, which funds projects that are important downtown. Are you guys willing to pay a pilot?
I, yeah, Councilman Smith, I, I, I do not know off the top of my head what that property is assessed at. I, I do not, I mean, the, the appraisals a couple of years ago, I said, were just south of $600,000. I, I, they, I think the appraisal value for it and what the property owner paid in taxes was less than $10,000 a year. I don't have the authority to commit to that tonight, but that is something the county would be willing to entertain that discussion when it comes back to you guys for our permits for planning and engineering sometime in the very near future. But I, I don't have that authority to, to obligate us to that tonight.
I would, I would appreciate if that's a conversation that we could have.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
That we're willing to, to do that so we can continue funding some of these projects that are important to downtown.
And it would be appraised at the value of nothing on there. So if you even appraise it for $600,000, what would it appraise for is, I think, a lot.
Yeah, yeah. And then the last point, this is more looking into the future, not necessarily tied to this project. I appreciate what you guys said about enhancing sidewalks. I, I think it's funny, we were, I was at the, the, the talk that we all had about downtown with Commissioner Harebrandt, and he was talking about those overhead passageways, which, which I think it's the, the bigger point about pedestrian safety all around downtown Noblesville. And so you said that you guys are willing to be a partner with us in having that conversation about what that looks like when it comes to a broader streetscape land.
Yes, I, I think so. What that partnership looks like, I'm not absolutely sure, but absolutely, we'd appreciate the opportunity to sit down and be a part of that. As you all know, the county owns a substantial amount of real estate in downtown Noblesville. Parking anywhere is going to be, directly impact our operations and what we do will directly impact parking. So we'd appreciate the opportunity to be at the table for that conversation, yes.
Awesome, thank you.
I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, and bringing up parking, as you're taking the SIDS lot for staging, that will lose several parking spaces for, for business owners and employees of permit parking. Have you thought through any mitigation for, for those people?
So.
Might as well stay up.
Yeah, sorry.
The city's had, we gave this to the city a year ago, right? So you've only had it for a year. The impact, if you look at that through the day, is not very big.
Okay.
Okay? So we've looked at that. For us, you know, we have the parking garage as well, which obviously, we're having problems with businesses in there, too, is causing us problems right now. So we're, we're trying to address those issues as well. That is a county lot. Once we're done with the project, the intent, my understanding the intent is that the city would be able to lease it again. I think it's a dollar a year, whatever that is, after that project's over. But at this time, I don't have any parking spaces available to accommodate that.
Okay.
And we, we meet every two weeks with Matt White, Sarah Reed, and Allie Krasny, when, when she's able to join us. And parking is something that we do talk about from time to time, and some of the concerns that the county's had, whether it be people parking during the day that may not be permitted to, or even people treating it like some kind of, you know, Fast and Furious Tokyo Draft, or Drift Racecourse or something. So we are, we have communicated that with Sarah and, and Matt White. And so that'll be a constant conversation that we'll continue to have, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I have one more question. You mentioned that you're working right now on completion of a master plan. When do you anticipate that being completed?
Between six months and probably a year total timeframe. It's taking effect all the property. We have possible court ads as well. I know that we have, they're going to the federal government and state government for, I think, three new ones immediately.
Yeah, we have three new courts, and it's, so it's not just the downtown properties, too. It's considering all the parks' properties, too, just for admin buildings, the coroner's office. And so it's, it's a fully encompassing land review of all the county property. A lot of the land the county owns just happens to be in downtown Noblesville, but it's, it's more than just downtown Noblesville for it, which is why it's going to take some time to fully complete that.
And so when we get that completed, the intent is to meet with the city and discuss that. In fact, we met with Sarah, and I sent Sarah some drawings today of some possible future endeavors with the city of Noblesville.
And that was going to be my next question, if, if anyone from the city was involved in some of that conversation.
The original planning, no, but once we're completed with planning, the commissioners and the council agree to it, then we'll bring it up to Noblesville, and then that's when they'll sit down and we'll start going through that and seeing what your thoughts are and go from that direction. We got to have some kind of plan in place now.
Correct.
As these courts are growing and we're getting more courts and more requirements, it's becoming hindrance.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a comment, please.
Mr. Johnson.
In the spirit of transparency and full disclosure, I need to disclose that I did perform a Phase 1 environmental site assessment in my function as a professional geologist for the county when that property was, was sold, and that I have no ongoing interest in the property or financial interest in, in anything that might happen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No other questions, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve Resolution RC-32-34 as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve RC-3224 in a second is a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Previously discussed ordinances, council to consider ordinance 430824 and ordinance amending section 3703 of the city's Code of Ordinances reimbursement policy for travel and related expenses. Caitlin Moss.
No.
It says Caitlin Moss on here, I know that, I'm not going to screw this up again, so.
Good evening, Caitlin Kessner now. Deputy Controller, I am here for the second reading of an updated travel policy for the city employees. This policy allows for employees to be paid for meal and incidental expenses at the federally approved GSA rate. This is based on their destination and duration of their business travel. This may be paid in advance or after they return. Under the policy, airline, hotel, registration costs, and similar expenses will still be paid by the city via credit card or reimbursement at actual cost. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance number 43-08-24 as presented.
Second.
The motion to approve ordinance 430824 in a second is a roll call vote.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Thurston?
Aye.
Ms. Wilds?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Nine aye, zero nay, the ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council to consider ordinance 440824 and ordinance approving bundled additional appropriation requests. Jeff Spalding.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, CFO and Controller. And as has been talked about several times, this was, this item is one of three fiscal actions that together represent a series of mid-year budget adjustments for issues that have arise since, risen since the 2024 budget was adopted. One of those actions, which was just a transfer of appropriations from contingency, was executed at the last council meeting. And then these two other actions, this being the first of two on the agenda, are items that require an additional appropriation action to fund the, the budget request. And in this case, it's a series of items for various departments from several different funds. And all of this was discussed at length at the finance committee meeting prior to introduction here.
Any questions? If there are no questions, I will open up the public hearing for ordinance 440824.
Mr. President, seeing no one come forward, I would move that we close the public hearing for ordinance number 44-08-24.
Second. The motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 440824 in a second is a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance number 44-08-24 as presented.
Second.
The motion to approve ordinance 440824 in a second is a roll call vote.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Thurston?
Aye.
Ms. Wilds?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Nine aye, zero nay, the ordinance is approved.
Thank you. Council to consider ordinance 450824 and an ordinance approving additional appropriations in the American Rescue Plan Local Fund. Jeff Spalding.
Yes, again, this is the third of the three items that I referenced before, and the only distinction here is this represents an appropriation of the remaining unspent balance, unobligated balance of the, what is colloquially referred to as the ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act funds that the city received as part of the coronavirus response. It was a national response, and we have still some of those funds as unyet spent. And this is by requirement of the statute, appropriation of those remaining balances, again, to address items that have arisen typically a little bit of a more significant, from a more, for a more significant need with regard to, to these funds, but meeting the requirements of, of, of this funding source as well. And again, all discussed at length at the finance committee meeting.
This is the balance of our ARPA funds?
Correct.
Any, any questions? No questions, I will open up the public hearing for ordinance 450824.
Mr. President, seeing no one come forward, I would move that we close the public hearing for ordinance number 45-08-24.
Second.
The motion to close the public hearing on ordinance 450824 in a second is a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance number 45-08-24 as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve ordinance 450824 in a second, this is a roll call vote.
Mr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Thurston?
Aye.
Ms. Wilds?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Nine aye, zero nay, the ordinance is approved.
Thank you. Council to consider ordinance 460824 and ordinance adopting a change of land use from single-family office flex to multi-family with an overlay of mixed residential for approximately 15.5 acres south of Campus Parkway and east of Maryland Ridge subdivision.
Move to introduce?
Second.
And council to consider ordinance 470824 and ordinance adopting a preliminary development and planned development ordinance, including waivers for a multifamily residential land use and a sub-district overlay of mixed residential, all within the corporate campus planned development for the construction of townhomes on approximately 15.5 acres south of Campus Parkway and east of Maryland Ridge subdivision, to be known as Oasis at Hyde Park.
Move to introduce?
Second.
Joyceanne Yelton.
Good evening. This is a request for both a change of land use and, and the adoption of a preliminary development plan. Again, this was a part of the original presentation that was made for the Hyde Park area. As you may recall, each one of these that eventually gets developed comes back before the planning commission and the council for their basic final review. This, again, is located south of Campus Parkway, and it is immediately east of the residential subdivision known as Maryland Ridge. It contains, again, approximately 15 acres. They are proposing a maximum of 71 townhome units. These will be owner occupied. They will range in size from 2,000 square feet upwards of 2,500 square feet. There will be a second ingress egress point, basically, that will go into Maryland Woods. But their main access will be from basically 141st Street. They were not able to get access off of Campus Parkway. As you may recall, Campus Parkway is controlled, or basically controlled by the county highway. Basically, most of the ingress egress points on Campus Parkway were established when we developed 146th Street and it was constructed. Again, there were a number of waivers that were requested. Many of these waivers have to do with the fact that because we consider the actual building of townhomes a multifamily structure by our definition, but when they're owner occupied, they function a little bit differently. So many of the waivers that they sought had to do with the fact that it's not a true.
So many of the waivers that they sought had to do with the fact that it's not a true multifamily building. The Plan Commission did have a public hearing on this, on both of these items. There were no individuals that came to either speak for or against this project. It was sent to you with a favorable recommendation for adoption by a nine-zero vote.
Thank you. Any questions for Joyceanne Yelton?
I have a quick question. The second mode of egress, is that emergency only, or is that, will that be another?
It is emerg, it's a public street connection.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'm glad that that's been added to the project.
Yep.
Thank you.
And also, I had a question about the Mr. Schenover, or I don't know if you were Mr. Davishay. The rental restriction language that we've been asking for recently has been included in this document as well.
It's signed and been delivered to staff, and it's on record.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance number 46-08-24 as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve ordinance 460824, and a second, this is a roll call vote.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Thurston.
Aye.
Ms. Wilds.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance number 47-08-24 as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve ordinance 470824, and a second, this is a roll call vote.
Sorry. Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Thurston.
Aye.
Ms. Wilds.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you. Council to consider ordinance 480824 and ordinance amending ordinance 040223 for a text amendment regarding uses south of State Road 32 and east of Hazel Dell Road for the Midland Point Plan Development.
Move to introduce.
Second.
Joyceanne Yelton.
And before you is a text amendment to an adopted PD ordinance. Basically, there was a chart, a prohibited use chart that was included as part of the ordinance. We are asking to amend it to allow one veterinarian clinic permitted in an inline tenant building. The area that is shown on the photograph here, area photograph, Area A, as you may recall, is a commercial portion. Area B is where the multifamily will be constructed. It did, there was a public hearing held at the Plan Commission. It came forward with a favorable recommendation for adoption by a nine-zero vote.
Any questions?
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance number 48-08-24 as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve ordinance 480824, and a second, this is a roll call vote.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Thurston.
Aye.
Ms. Wilds.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you. Council to consider ordinance 490824 and ordinance amending ordinance 400622 for additional waivers on five acres of property at 1255 South 16th Street, known as the townhomes at Stony Creek Plan Development.
Move to introduce.
Second.
Joyceanne Yelton and Mr. Tuohy.
They honor before you is an amendment to their original PD that was adopted back in 2022. The proposed use at that time was attainable multifamily housing project. That is still the same project that is going forward here. They were originally granted approval to build up to 53 units. The number of units has now been reduced to approximately 39 units. It was discovered during the time that they presented their construction drawings to us that went before the technical advisory committee, that there were items in our Noblesville standards that were not being met. Again, that is part of our Unified Development Ordinance. The public hearing, again, was held at the Plan Commission. There were no individuals present at that meeting to speak either for or against the project. The Plan Commission did forward this with a favorable recommendation for adoption by an eight yes and one no vote.
Thank you. And this went through ARB as well?
Yes, a long time. It did go to ARB, I believe, earlier in the, earlier in the year. Again, this is basically their layout of their proposed units at this time.
Any questions for Joyceanne Yelton?
Yes, Mr. President. Do we have any rental restriction in place for this particular development?
Rental restrictions?
For the, for the townhomes, as far as what we just discussed on the previous project.
I believe it's part of the, part of the agreement with the state for the subsidized rent of their income.
Right. This is, yes. They did receive tax credits.
Interesting.
So there are rules that they have to follow.
And though this is labeled townhomes, these are indeed for rent properties, correct?
That is correct.
Rent a...
Rent to own.
Rent to...
But they could, they could own them.
Any other questions? Mr. Tuohy, would you like to add any color to this conversation?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Town Council, Brian Tuohy. My address is 50 South Mariden. Joyceanne did a terrific job of presenting this. We'll try to answer any questions you might have. In summary, the request and petition is to amend a development plan that was approved by this body and the Plan Commission back in 2022. As Joyceanne mentioned, it's gone from 53 units to 39 units. And when they learned that there were some additional waivers, one, to eliminate the requirement for widening the road, and two, to avoid having to move five enormous powerpools, they then filed this amendment to the development plan and the request for the waiver of those two items. And the Plan Commission heard our case and voted eight to one to approve it. We'll try to answer any questions you might have. Thank you for your time.
Any questions?
Only comment, Mr. President. I'm familiar, we've worked with Family Promise through my church family for years, and really appreciate the work that you're doing in our community. Thank you.
And Nancy Ramsey and her team will be staffing this community, so they're very interested in this approval.
That's great. Great partner and a great wraparound services for this project.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance number 49-08-24 as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve ordinance 490824, and a second, this is a roll call vote.
Mr. Thurston.
Aye.
Ms. Wilds.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you, members of the council. Good evening.
Counsel to consider Resolution RC-3424, a resolution opting into the opioid settlement. John Hughes. You don't have to get up.
Feels more official here. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. John Hughes, City Attorney. What you have before you is a resolution we previously discussed in executive session some time ago. The Kroger settlement in general is a approximately $1.2 billion settlement, and this resolution just indicates that we, as the city, are agreeing to opt in to be a participant in that settlement agreement. Ongoing discussions still at the national level, as well as at the attorney general level, on how the distributions will look. We expect them to look similar to past settlements. But if you have any questions, I'll be answered. Otherwise, I would recommend your approval of this resolution.
I appreciate your guidance in helping us opt in and opt out, and in and out. It's been confusing. So, thank you.
Welcome.
Any questions?
Mr. President, I would move that we approve Resolution RC-34-24 as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve Resolution RC-3424, and a second, this is a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel comments?
I, there you go.
You gonna do the front porch music festival?
Nope.
Front porch music festival was this last weekend, and for anybody who missed it, it was an outstanding, one of the best days in Noblesville.
Outstanding.
Outstanding. I was, I guessed close to 100,000 people there, but I know that number's not right. It felt like it in my front yard.
It was brunch.
But it was just a beautiful day, great bands, and it's just another grassroots success for Noblesville. And I think Mr. Eyre led the parade again this year. Oh, no, he didn't this year. He has in the past. We got a new grand marshal currently, but thank you for anybody who got to come to that.
I had someone in Fishers, someone that lives in Fishers stalked me downtown Indianapolis today, tell me that they came up just for the Brick Streets and to see it and how amazing it was. So it was pretty cool to see. I just have two things. One, I alluded to it earlier, but Noblesville Main Street hosted the Downtown Business Summit earlier in August, and it was amazing. The Primeval was packed to the gills. There were more than 100 people in there at 7:30 in the morning to hear about downtown. And it was great. There was a lot of good conversation, and everybody, it felt more like a pep rally than a meeting. So everybody's excited about downtown. And since Mr. Eyre is here, I wanted to, and he always talks about the free events that are going on. September 6 is Main Street's first Friday, and they're having Friday Night Lights. So make sure that everybody mark your calendar for that nice free event happening in downtown Noblesville.
Salsa.
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 Salsa's ticketed. It's ticketed. It's still great. You should absolutely come. I look forward to seeing a new salsa. But that is, that is also happening between now and then.
Mr. President, since Nancy is still here, I would just like to recognize Nancy Ramsey as the executive director of Family Promise for many, many years. She is currently in her month-long transition as she is retiring. But I just want to say thank you for all of your efforts for so many families in the Noblesville community.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Also, she's a classmate, Mr. President, of the HCLA 2014 Best Class Ever. Get that out there.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you. Also, we just finished up tonight, our third of three budget meetings. I want to thank staff, Mayor's Office, Jeff Spalding. It's good to know we're in great fiscal shape, and it's a very clear vision going forward, and it's a lot of work every year, and I really appreciate the way it's presented to us and the manner it's presented, and so thank you. Any other comments? We adjourn.